Great, so we'll call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. We're a small, but mighty group today. And Marcus asked me to chair in Yanni and Ashlyn's absence. I did watch your last meeting, so I'm caught up on, I think. I won't make too many assumptions on what you got through last week. So hopefully, we'll pick up with the rest of those documents. But first, would anybody like to read our land acknowledgement?
Okay.
Thanks, David.
We'd like to acknowledge we are on traditional land of the rich and diverse group of native peoples who have called this area home for more than 10,000 years. We honor it with gratitude, the land itself, and the descendants of these native people who are still here today.
Thank you so much. And could I get a motion for the agenda?
I'm in favor of the agenda.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye. Okay, great. Meeting dates, let's see, Yanni mentioned, we have one on June 11th, and what was the other one?
Last time, but I don't have my notes.
June 8th, I thought?
The 6th, I think, the Thursday before.
Special meeting, 7:00 PM, Thursday, June 6th.
Right. And if that's virtual or in person, we have space to do it here. Also, it's out of virgin.
Oh, just like this.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And then it sounded like everybody that was here last time could come. I think I'm able to come on this since I will be out of the country on the 11th. So I hope this stuff, but it sounds like everyone else will be around. Okay, and it looks like we're deferring the meeting minutes from last week.
Yes.
Public hearings, is that just a new placeholder?
No, it's an A unless there's something listed after.
Okay. Public comments, let's see. Randy, do you have anything you'd like to share with us this evening? Well, I'll just wait one second, and if you do, just raise your hand. All right. Oh, great. Hello, good evening.
Can you hear me, Maddie, or Commissioner Larson?
Yeah, I can hear you just fine. It's nice to hear from you. What do you have to say to us this evening?
I really don't have anything to share. I'm auditing on behalf of the Stewardship Foundation and my own personal interests, particularly in the progress you're making on reviewing the comp plan. So I'm going to be in and out, if that's okay.
That is fine. We are glad to have you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Okay. And then we don't have a city council.
I guess. Hi, I'm Richard.
I'm sorry, do you have anything to say, sir?
No, I don't. Observing.
Okay. Sorry. All right, no city council meetings.
She's still traveling. I thought she, Deputy Mayor Bodie is still traveling. That she might be able to make it from both, so I left the option open. But if she patches in, we can accommodate later.
Great. And I think this item under old business, A, brings up your standing wheel.
Yes.
How exciting. Okay, we like standing.
So for the record, we had a community survey, and as part of that, Lois gifted the city a gift for those taking the survey as an award. It was one of the questions on the survey, and I believe 321 of the 938 survey takers marked that they're interested in this award. So we have $500 gift certificate for local, whatever. And I thought to add a little bit of randomness. This one, a little bit of fairness and randomness to the process in this public setting that we would do it this way. So SCJ Christina has the list associated with the name contact of 321 persons. I believe I had it set up because I only want to do it once fairly. Now I'm going to press spin, and the number that comes up, if you could announce the name associated with that, or...
Let me pull up my spreadsheet and get ready.
290. So there's the random number out of 321. I don't know if we want to announce it online or public, but we'll check that list and get in touch with the person associated with it.
I do, I have a name, so we can contact that person.
Do you think that's a fair way?
I mean, it's public knowledge, and then you don't have to have somebody calling your office.
I wouldn't mind. But it's not TV, and I don't know the person, but I thought it was.
I think if they put their name in that question, they wanted to participate, yeah?
Let's do it.
Okay, then the lucky winner is Jose Vila.
Thank you.
So congratulations to Jose, and thank you, Lois, for your generous donation to make that possible.
Worth that, and thank you very much. Thank you.
Hopefully, there was an increase in participation. I don't know.
I think so. The numbers are good.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah.
There we go.
Okay. That was exciting. The public participation plan, I heard, I think Sam had asked if we could start with this at this meeting. So I think these next few items are you, Christina?
Yes, and I've built everything into the same presentation, so I'm just going to go ahead and launch my slideshow and work through everything, more or less, in the order that's shown here. Okay, so here we are, May 14th, talking yet again about the comprehensive plan update. Tonight, we've got, has been the case for a number of months now, a very packed agenda. So I'm going to go over the remaining schedule with the Planning Commission folks. Then I'm going to talk about public participation. We'll go through the comp plan element updates, starting with climate policies. We'll talk about capital facilities and utilities together, and then we'll talk about the transportation materials. As always, feel free to interrupt me at any time with questions or requests for clarification. And I do have a slide at the end for any follow-up discussion as well. Right, so with that, here we are in May, so we're talking about transportation, climate, capital facilities, and utilities, which means that in June, all we have left is economic development and parks, trails, and open space. And we actually have the economic development materials already, so the very last element should be in the city's hands sometime next week or very early the following week. So we are closing in on the end game. Thank you all for hanging in there while we have tackled so much in such a short period of time. In terms of public participation, so I did want to briefly go over the survey results, and then I'll talk about what's coming up next. So we did have 932 respondents. This is a really great response rate. Thank you all who participated. Thank you all who helped get the word out and really generate such a great number. Some of the findings that we have are that there's already a very strong alignment with the current vision statement. This is as we expected and really validates the work that we've done so far. There is some acknowledgement within that, that more work is needed to continue working towards that vision, especially related to non-motorized infrastructure, so that's bike lanes, sidewalks, trails, regional collaboration, and diversity and inclusivity. The regional collaboration one, I suspect that may be because people don't quite understand why that that is part of the vision in terms of like how the city wants to be in the 20-year planning horizon. So that may be more of a matter of further exploitation is needed. The priorities that floated to the top are an emphasis on safety, protecting green spaces, and creating more opportunities for recreation and trails. The community values that really rose to the top, I'm sure that you're starting to see this is all very thematically similar, but safe and walkable neighborhoods, beautiful parks, trails, and open spaces, high-quality schools, a compact, inviting, and walkable town center, and convenient businesses and services that meet the needs of people that live and work in the city. So again, consistent themes are really focused on safety, which is primarily related to non-motorized transportation, environmental conservation, and parks, recreation, open spaces, and trails. Those two are fairly related as well from some of the written comments that we are receiving or we have received. There is also a notable desire to expand the character and range of businesses present in town center and other commercial nodes. So people are looking for a greater range of commercial uses that more directly need. We also, we had a specific section on housing, and we found in the results a strong preference for preserving character-defining features of single-unit detached residential neighborhoods, which are also called single-family detached residential neighborhoods. And those character-defining features are things like form, scale, tree canopy coverage, or the ratio of building to lot area, so lot coverage. We were happy to find a desire to create a range of affordability levels that directly serve a variety of family types and life stages. We did find some interest in allowing mixed-use development in residential neighborhoods. I think that speaks to this desire for some of the services and maybe like small neighborhood-centric retail establishments, like a little market or something, that allow people to have their needs met very like hyper-locally. Related to middle housing, we found notably the acceptance of smaller-scale middle housing types. This is something that we expected, and those types were cottage courts, ADUs, and duplexes. So there's not really much of a surprise there. Concerns related to allowing middle housing were the potential increased environmental impacts, oral reduction of tree canopy coverage, safety concerns, especially again around walking or bicycling, and the potential incompatibility with the existing neighborhood character. We also had a transportation and infrastructure section. The transportation questions had a conclusion that there was clear desire for improved sidewalks and other non-motorized infrastructure as the primary priority. And the preferred facilities improvements, aside from, excuse me, the transportation infrastructure, were to more broadly improve aging infrastructure for a little bit more reliability, plan a bit more cohesively for utilities, and to maintain and enhance access to parks and open spaces in the city. Our last section was related to environmental stewardship, and the priorities that rose to the surface here were protecting and enhancing natural areas and wildlife habitats, maintaining and growing urban tree canopy, expanding pedestrian infrastructure, and more effectively treating stormwater before it outlets into our waterways. I'm sure that not much of this comes as any real surprise. This is something that we are, many of these findings are things that we have talked about on an ongoing basis, but if there are any any specific areas where you'd like us to dig a little bit deeper into analysis, please let me know. Again, this is our preliminary results report out, and we'll be finalizing our report on that to share with you all. Next steps for public participation are looking at open houses. So the first one is what I've summarized as the what and why, which we hope to have early this summer. So this would be the presentation of the policies that we're proposing in the update and some of the drivers behind that. So tying some of these changes to recent legislation and providing an educational component to that open house so people really understand what the city's obligations are and the policy decisions that you all have made at this point, or are recommending at this point, to achieve those requirements. And then I have not yet forgotten about the transportation, housing, and infrastructure workshop. I think at this point, we have enough information about transportation and housing and infrastructure to incorporate that into this public open house, or to maybe do like a paired event one day and another day. And the outcome of that would be more of a prioritization scheme that supports implementation of the comprehensive plan. So it would be rolled into, probably rolled to a certain extent into the policies, but also would inform the specifics of that implementation plan. And then this fall, we would have a second public open house where we present the final draft plan for public review. There are also some opportunities that the city could take for summer engagement events, and the purpose of these kinds of events would be to potentially probe survey results a little more deeply if we want to get a little bit more information about public opinion on any particular topic to inform implementation, or to, we could present some of the policy recommendations. In particular, I'm considering housing, middle housing, and transportation could also be addressed more specifically in a specific event format.
Christina? Just a question. So on the previous slide, I'm wondering if we could soon talk about the dates for these events, because I know myself, my summer is becoming very packed, my fall is becoming very packed. So I'm wondering if we can nail down those dates.
I think, I think we can select maybe a short range of dates for each of those, and then Mark and I will need to coordinate more specifically about kind of where it will happen and what kind of lead time we need for materials. But I do think that we can select a reasonable range, pin down the final date within there, and maybe do a like a poll or some kind of like final decision process. Mark, what do you think about that?
I think it I don't know, it depends. We're on low punch yet. The last two days have been horrific. I don't even know what topic I'm talking about. It's too many questions. I think if we're successful on June 6th and 11th with the two remaining new items, depending on what we get to tonight, and any carryover, then it's safe to say right after that, we can start holding public events while we work on final strikeout, underlying draft document. I'll be doing the Commerce Grant. I'll be doing the SEPA review during that time period, and we'll need a date for the open house and a public hearing. So some after the 11th, but before July 4th.
Okay, so that gives us essentially the last two weeks of June. So we will look for a date in there.
It's dependent. That's the, that's, that's the good scenario. The other scenario is something I've talked about with the mayor, where we do a soft introduction at City Council that overlaps closure at Planning Commission. So summer is ideal for outreach and finish this plan, and we could start briefing City Council in June and July so that we're not starting with them in September. And then we could stick to the overall timeline that we originally promised them. So with the special meetings, we were set up through June. We haven't talked about a special meeting until I, at Planning Commission, but a Planning Commission recommendation, and then a potential handoff to City Council in July. Now it's looking more like an overlapping completion at Planning Commission and introduction by staff mostly, or Planning Commission liaison and Deputy Commissioner Bodie to start City Council on absorbing the process and materials in work session. The primary reason is they are tasked with two very high-level intensive efforts, budget and cost, mixed in with everything else. So any work session, maybe the whole, any opportunity like that, we can overlap, preserve some time for potential public hearing, open house in July, and not affect the July 4th vacation or trying to grant it too early.
Christina, thanks, Mark. On the, I think maybe it was the slide before this, or to back on some of the, oh, no, it was before the results. It was some of the other outreach where you had the farmer's market, yoga.
Oh. This one.
And I guess I'm looking at maybe what our purpose is for these events in relationship to the slide we were just looking at, which is the open house. Would these be about sort of seating that and kind of recruitment vehicles for folks to participate in those open houses? Or, you know, what's our message here versus the open house?
Yeah, I think that these, these events would be a little bit more informal, some opportunities to have some conversations with people that are really interested in the comp plan that maybe haven't had a chance to participate in the survey or attend the open house. They would be like a, perhaps a mini version of the open house where some material is available for review. There might be an activity like I hesitate to say like a worksheet or something, but we could maybe do like a mini poll or some kind of activity that lets people, you know, provide some direct input, depending on, again, depending on what the purpose is. If we do want to unpack some of the survey results a little bit more, if we do want to understand prioritization and how that might play into implementation. So we can, we can design those events to be like very generic. Here's where we're at with the comp plan. You know, stay tuned for more, or we can have a very specific purpose where we ask people to please give an opinion on a specific question.
Let me to recommend that we would use these types of events. So if we push the open house into July, which gives us lead time to do some outreach, that we might have two purposes. One would be, you know, the most salient outcomes of the survey. And maybe a part two would be like any sort of sticky wickets that came up in the survey, like unresolved, you know, gray areas for giving input. And then the third piece to be used as sort of an educational piece to prime people for the workshop and also the changes that are coming. So kind of an educational piece, just to help them to see that the comp plan that we're doing is in response to legislative direction, and that some of the things that will be changing in our city aren't coming from the city. They're coming from new state laws that we have to abide by, because I could see where people would say, whoa, why is there a duplex going on next door? Because maybe they didn't recognize that that had shifted. And then the misunderstanding would be the city is upzoning Willie and Ellie or something, right? So I think that education piece could be really helpful, too. I don't know. What do you guys think about using these kinds of events for that? So that people are more primed and ready to engage with the work we've actually done when it comes time for an open house.
It would also be nice to provide like a flyer, the outlines, what is the agenda for the, for the public events?
Right.
So the prepares, people can be prepared to attend. So I very much like that idea.
An agenda for the open house. So that, yeah, I think that's a great idea. What do you think, Sam? How would you want to use these events as a precursor to the open house?
I almost feel like as Christina presented the two open houses, the first one seems a little bit urgent, because I feel like that's the one where we can educate on the legislative changes and what the process has been to date, and, you know, what the parameters are of what we have to work with, with the comp plan. And I feel like that should happen if second half of June is doable, or like right after Independence Day holiday, so that there's something out there and recorded. And then in these reinforcing events, which are going to be only a subset of the people who hear about it, because only certain people go to concerts at the park or go to the farmer's market. So it's not going to be a representative sample of the community population. We can drive people to that for more information, and it'll be recorded, or, you know, if it's before the event happens, people can come to it. And then maybe we have a follow-on event that gets more either into a workshop or an opportunity for input for people, and that could happen then in later in the timeline, depending on these contingencies. But I don't think we need to land, as Mark suggested, what we're going to get through at the June meetings to be able to have a public event that focuses on the legislative changes and some education about where we're at and how people get engaged. And I think that's important sooner rather than later.
If, if I can offer an additional thought, we can, we can present material at the first public open house as preliminary recommendations, which would, I think, give us kind of a buffer in case we don't get all the way through the last two elements at the June meetings, and then still confidently plan to have a late-June open house with the acknowledgement that there's still a little bit of work that we're doing, but we want to get this out there for for initial public feedback to make sure that we can incorporate any necessary changes based on comments that we get.
Thank you for that, Sam. I just, oh, sorry, I just wanted to ask, yeah, to wrap, finish your, so what would your recommendation be for, well, if we're going to show up at like yoga in the park or farmers markets, what would our message be at those, between like now and the end of June?
I think if we're able to, in the next couple of weeks, land dates for the two or three town halls, the first town hall could be brief, an hour, just to kind of brief people and get input on the legislative process. It's a little more digestible and accessible than it ever forty for people who can't access it afterwards. And we could pivot then on, you know, what the handouts or activities should be at those events. Before then, it could be, hey, come to this thing. Here are the next two dates that we have planned. Here are the other ways to give feedback and get engaged. And then as the summer goes on and as those dates pass, hey, we have this thing on this day. Go here to see the reporting. Here are the upcoming ones. Here's how to give feedback and engage. So it kind of just reinforces that and then educates on what's been done so far, how people can kind of get up to speed.
Right. I like, what, what about, the question I have for you, Christina, will the giraffe comp plan be ready for that first open? Because I feel like that could really drive a lot of comments to those, you know, secondary little groups that we have, the farmer's market, the you know, if we have like a draft, we can direct track towards, you know, reviewing the draft comp plan. That's a help.
Yeah, it shouldn't sound like we'd have that, though, unless the June meeting.
I guess that's the question.
We may have the shadow. Seven of the elements. Yeah, the three elements with climate policy from last Thursday and tonight. Transportation, we can get through. Capital facilities, utilities are straightforward, knowing that in June 6th and 11th, we'll do economic development and parks. Parks is one of the easiest. People have already been to Tree Board. We've already been to Climate Action Committee. A lot of that is already captured. There's one other category that we're filtering in there, and then we're going to Parks Board at the end of May to test them, to get their vital. And I almost wonder, to your question, Maddie, and your suggestion, Lois, on how could we drive engagement? As we finish a draft element, even if it's before we've kind of done our final vote and landed on the final draft, if we could put it on our microsite that we have that talks about the planning process and say, hey, here's where the draft file elements are, drive people there so that, you know, as they're engaging in these town halls, they can also on their own time look at that, and if they have feedback, we could invite feedback by a particular way that doesn't require them to show up at one of these meetings or at one of the town halls. Maybe there's an email box or something. So that would be another way to kind of make it a little more transparent and accessible to people, instead of waiting to the final town hall when everything's kind of blocked at that point and we're under the gun.
I like your focus on it's engagement early, and then later it's about catching people up. So what would be our next steps be, Christina, if we, if we did want to, you know, support these efforts through the farmer's market or, you know, other means leading up to the open house and afterwards, who would normally schedule that?
So I within SCJ's contracted scope of work, we're on deck for the open houses. We will also very happily prepare materials to be taken to these events, but we would be looking for support from you all or city staff to represent the project at these meetings or at these events.
Tables, banner.
Uh, tables, banners, canopy, logistics, whoever's running the event can assist. Some of these, that could be the primary. I also need to stay married. Like farmer's market as uh, an example, a table amongst their people who know by and ask questions. And good for that, all farmer's market, no way. But um, we could help with logistics and have a planning commissioner fulfill a specific event, if you have three, for instance. But uh, I could help with the logistic, but I couldn't do three. Three night meetings and et cetera, et cetera, current planning. Not see my way for months, so that's not gonna happen. Uh, some of these other ones, there's absolutely no opportunity for staff to attend.
So again, I, I think we need calendar dates so that we can share some the responsibility.
Well, and to even pipe down, if we can get on the farmer's market.
Well, what I do know about that is that they're already being filled.
Yeah.
Those, it, it may be possible.
Yes.
Well, okay, yeah, because I see from that comments people.
So maybe our, maybe our efforts would be better spent coming up with a compelling flyer that directs folks to the microsite and it, it starts to serve as both share, spreading information, but then recruiting people into that first open house at the end of June. Possibly, I mean, just to move this conversation along, maybe that would be the best thing. In which case we could put flyers up, we can, you know, put it in a stack or in a newsletter.
Yeah, well, that's another side issue. Joanne is out sick and she's retiring. Oh, there's going to be a gap. City clerk countered it prior, countered it, so social media will need a little bit of time. Printing and a flyer, we can do that amongst them. With existing, you know, knowledge of material, you know, SCJ's help, distribution and so forth, staff can take it. And then that leaves SCJ to focus on the town hall, open house, public hearing level.
Does that seem more achievable coming up with a flyer that we push out digitally and printed? And then just focus all of our attention on the two open houses?
That does seem more achievable. I think to David's point, maybe could, I don't mean to be rude, but Mark, couldn't we ask you and Christina to coordinate maybe in the next week on some potential dates for the town halls? So that we can get those, cause that does seem to be the good balance for that, too.
Yeah, I'm thinking that for the first one, we should plan on that last week of June. Um, so Mark, you and I should connect on availability that week. Um, but that kind of is the last full week before we hit summer holiday stuff and, and vacation things. Um, and then uh, sometime after Labor Day, potentially mid-September uh, for the second open house was my, my initial thought.
But we, we've also promised through deputy mayor to have a public hearing right before the formal recommendation and we have the council chambers. So that could be a, a normal meeting, even in July or a special meeting in the chambers to fulfill the public hearing. City clerk would be there reported, that's very formal. That cannot happen until we have a draft and probably should happen right before you make a motion for the right decision. So that open house can be timed before and after that. The second open house would be either seen as a city council open house with funding commission help or transition open house, but is likely going to be after the public hearing.
I like the idea that it would at least signal to the community that if there is another open house after the public hearing, that we actually left space to seriously consider anything that came over the near. You know, as a city, whoever has the second one and it's a nice signal to be able to add the hearing, say, thanks so much for your input and there's one more session.
And then, so that would leave four and we could do those with the SCJ contract with city council. Two would be a planning commission, two would be seen as city council, open house end of June. Planning commission meeting with a public hearing and a recommendation. Then a period of transition time, open house with the city council that the planning commission can uh, participate in. And then a public hearing with the city council, hopefully late fall, definitely before December. Uh, and then hopefully their action right after that second public hearing.
Okay, so the action item is that you and Christina will get together and propose some dates.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Well, I totally feel like the draft should, you know, something that people can take their teeth into. But prior to that first open house, we did just so much, cause it's so tight after, it doesn't give the public much time to look, look at the dawn.
Yeah, although it is posted. Well, the happy materials is there and as we go through it, it's available publicly. Some people won't participate until there's the action or recommendation. But uh, if we don't do that, we're susceptible to, well, you're asking us for info, but you're not showing us to what input.
What form will, yeah.
So we have to have something.
Christina's, I think what she said was that the goal would be if we're successful on the June meetings, that we would have a draft, if not for all sections.
Exactly.
All the ones, so I think that's the, what the goal is to have the draft, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so my, my hope is that we get through all of the elements that are on tonight's agenda tonight. Um, there's a lot on there and time is ticking pretty quickly. So I don't know if that's realistic at this point. Um, but that would give us truly the lion's share of the comp plan to be formatted, have updated figures and maps, all that good stuff. Um, so that it will start to look like a complete document uh, for public consumption. Um, and then in uh, Leland is working on the edits to the housing element. So um, I should, I should hope, have those back soon. That will be another big piece that gets rolled into the plan. Then uh, all that's left are really these last couple of elements that we'll be talking about in June. If we're really talking just about these two elements, I do think it would be possible to have those formatted prior to uh, an end of June open house, depending on the specific day. Um, but if, if there's a lot of stuff that gets kicked from this meeting to June, then that is a little bit less achievable. Uh, so we would have kind of a, a partial formatted draft and a partial working draft.
Then can I suggest we move to the first element?
Thank you, that's exactly where I would say it.
Okay, that's thanks, thank you.
Okay, great.
Okay. Um, all right, so uh, these are the usual slides that um, I think I'm, I'm just going to breeze through these, just the objectives and the framework for what we're trying to achieve as we're doing our updates. All right, so climate, I've, I've titled this climate element, this should be titled climate policies. Um, as a reminder, what we're working on currently is adapting the draft climate action plan policies for inclusion in the comprehensive plan. The city will separately work on developing the full climate elements. So just a kind of a reminder for the record uh, that, that what we're doing now is sort of climate light with a, a full and complete process to follow later this summer and into next year. So what you've got that is um, that, that I've asked you to look at specifically for climate are the land use, environmental quality and community services and public safety elements. Um, what we have uh, proposed within those elements are some minor text additions to uh, existing policies or policies that you have reviewed previously uh, and some new policies and or goals uh, within these three elements. All of the additions that we've made are aligned with the climate action plan and the climate action committee's feedback uh, on our original suggestions for where different actions should have a, a policy link up in the comp plan. Um, the questions that I had for you are uh, whether we were missing any priorities that should be addressed now versus uh, deferred to when the city's preparing the full climate element uh, or uh, and or any concerns about language. Uh, for example, we had reintroduced the term transit oriented development because that was directly called out in the climate action plan. Uh, but I know that um, previously the city had preferred to, to shy away from that specific term. Um, and uh, we've, we've also suggested some new implementation actions that I would love to roll into the implementation plan. Uh, and any, any concerns anyone had with that. Um, I will say I did get feedback from Mark, uh, including Yana's um, notes. Uh, so I do have some, uh, some materials and, and comments to work through, but um, there were also quite a few notes that said discuss with SCJ uh, at this meeting. So with that, um, let, let's dig in, who wants to go first?
So what I might suggest um, following last week's meeting is if those notes reflect what we spent a lot of time talking about last week, what we might just do is go through them one by one, because I think there were probably some that we were fine with the changes. And if that represents the consensus, I think we're probably fine not focusing on those. But for the ones that said discussed, or where we had a disagreement, maybe we could focus on those and just talk about them briefly.
I think that sounds.
Uh, the only issue is going to be share screen. And I know that Christina has them, she has Yanni's three files and they have mine. Mine is like a heat map of where we're at. Uh, SCJ has those, if you guys all have them, we can just kind of verbally go through like we did last time. Where was it? Bring it up. Uh, but it's going to be difficult to share screen and do it.
I, I, though, I think Christina, Yanni chaired the last meeting and his, his notes, I believe, are reflective of the group discussion. So where he said discussion, the notes that you have, like, I don't think those were Yanni's notes just about Yanni's thoughts. He actually took notes on behalf of the group last week. If that's what it appeared in the reporting, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so.
That is, that is what the, the notes appear to be. Sorry, I call them Yana's notes because they are all um, technically authored by Yana, um, or Yanni. Uh, so um, but they do seem to be um, pretty comprehensive. I, I don't think that these are only his notes.
Since, since you looked through them already, where were areas that left you with questions perhaps? And, and maybe could we tackle those and then move on to the next section? Or you know, the next part of our work?
Uh, yes, let me, I'm just going to skim through because there were a couple, um, a couple of places where he called out um, needing some additional information.
And that's okay, take your time. My, my thinking here, having nothing here was that that will bog us down with maybe relitigating some things or spending time discussing stuff that doesn't necessarily need more of a recap. Just be, I've been looking at our, our list today, it looks like we have a lot of other sections to get through. So, so yeah, it seems maybe prudent and type, more efficient time-wise to just have you maybe ask us some questions.
Because there were different invitations that we made, but then there are also gaps of information that we were like requesting. So I think it's those gaps of information that.
Yeah, but we don't have Yanni's notes to know.
Well, I feel like the biggest, I, I feel like the biggest gap was in that environmental section from the climate action committee group. There was one section that, that made no sense to us. I think that generated a lot of confusion for us. I don't know if you recall that, the last section of environmental quality.
The one with the like repetitive.
Yeah, just a lot of, yeah.
Oh, yeah, where we had added quite a few new policies and goals with additional policies under them. Um.
We're pretty. Before we go there, I did, um, I know that in a meeting before, um, I had said that I would get some uh, write some alternatives for colorblind options. So I did do that for LEU one, six and ten, one. So anyway, that was just my. All right.
So that's land use?
Yes, land, land use one, six and ten, one, where I wanted to offer a colorblind alternative.
So, so could we address that when we get to land use?
Are we not on land use?
We are.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, as long as.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Um, is it, is it okay if I share, share this screen with Yana's notes? Um, on the specific element that we're talking about? Or do you really want, should I just call out some of the comments that he had highlighted? Where I think um, there's some more information that I need?
Uh, you feel free to share and, and yes, we'd like to know where you ran into. Uh, we don't have his notes, so we, and, and I don't think everybody has took the comprehensive notes he did.
Okay.
It would be helpful for you to kind of lead us through where there are gaps.
Okay, um, so let me switch my. Land use. Um, all right, so here's the first section, is this large enough for everybody to see?
Yes.
Okay, um, so we're in uh, well, a goal, land use five, economic vitality. Uh, there's a note that council member Lee will be recommending some more policy language.
I submitted that, uh, but I don't think everybody, I submitted it, Mark, Yanni and uh, yeah. Basically, what would be nice is if we could see some sort of language that uh, recommends expanding the zoning map or increasing commercial and mixed use along high transit corridor, promoting that. Um, I can send it to the group right now.
Yeah, if you think of Florida, is this?
Is this to add language to encourage like rezoning along?
Yeah, I think, I think the city should look at that, that's, you know, I'm throwing it out there because uh, we're talking about all of this housing, all of this stuff that there's no way that the city, given the current budgetary constraints, is going to be able to pay for any of this. And really, I think we're so top heavy with housing or with, with residential that we're going to add more residential. It, it just, I just see such an issue with it unless we can provide the city with some sort of funding source. And, and I think having a healthier mix of zoning, mixed use, commercials, uh, commercial mixed use is really part of that answer.
Yeah, no, that's very.
Okay, let me resend it.
Okay, yeah, I um, I fully support that. Was that um, did that require further discussion or was that, was that the consensus from last week's meeting?
I, I've been throwing it out there the last few meetings, but you know, whether there is disagreement amongst the group, uh, you know, we, we only haven't had a chance to talk about it, but uh, I've been throwing it out there, so.
I, I have it in my marks between hot and cold, it's right in the middle. So take that as a potential amendment to be discussed.
Okay. All right, um, I will look for your specific language suggestions and get that incorporated here.
Then yours, can you forward your email also?
Sure. And Christina, would you flag things that get added but haven't been discussed? Like language, maybe that not everybody's seen merit this tonight. Could it be in the draft as proposed or something that signifies it? So it doesn't get lost in the, the other edits, right? Because a lot of the edits are, we've discussed it and so that's, it, it exists now as discussed and approved. But if we're adding things where only a few of us have been part of the conversation, maybe it could have some sort of um, notation on the draft. So we know.
Yeah, I'll, I'll figure out if we can highlight it or add like a floating text box to call it out or some kind of, some, some kind of signifier.
That'd be great, yeah, I feel with so many people absent, it would be wise to circle back to those.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just going to retype if I send it to you.
Just so you know, Christina, A, then the came in afternoon today was not shared with you.
Okay, no, that's totally fine. Um, I also, I was attending the, the national planning conference virtually last week. So I wasn't um, wasn't necessarily closely tracking all of the emails that came in. So it's possible that things got lost in my inbox and I need to go back and find them. Um, okay, the next piece was um, Yana asked to talk about uh, buffering pedestrian um, and business vitality. This is language that was uh, suggested last time uh, based on discussion. Um, but I'm happy to revise it to use council member Lee's proposed uh, edit here. If everyone's okay with that.
Yeah, I think we discussed that last week. It may not have taken Yanni's consensus, but. It may not have taken Yanni's consensus, but.
Okay. Um. Looks like, uh, you had preferred to, to simplify this section to just leave it as, um. People of color instead of specifically calling out folks that identify as black or Indigenous. I think that's, that's fine. Um, I don't think that there's a big issue with that.
I, yeah, I just suggested encourage all residents to participate during comprehensive planning process. Employ multiple outreach methods and platforms to welcome and facilitate broad participation.
Um, we, we, we could go that direction. Um, a lot of the, uh, guidance from the state, from King County and from Hutterstown Regional Council. Really want to, um. There's a desire to highlight some of the groups that have historically not been well engaged in the planning process. Uh, so that's why we've listed it this way. If you prefer to describe it a different way, if everybody is comfortable with that, then I'm, I'm totally happy to make that change.
Mark, in your judgment, do you think if we changed this and didn't use the language? Of the type that is encouraged by the state and the county, it might hold up on, isn't there some sort of approval we have to get?
Uh, we will be required to be certified by Department of Commerce. For the comprehensive plan update for the transportation elements will, will need to be certified by PSRC. Regional transportation, but they also have multi-county planning policies that wrap into King County CVPs. That's, those three levels are where that language comes from. So we need to be consistent with it. So what we've been doing the past three months is exploring local language that is consistent. So not every instance needs to mirror. If we cleanse or revise this whole document to avoid any instance like this, we will get flagged for not being consistent. But it's, it's a balance, right? And, uh, it's hard to predict what they're going to say in February of twenty twenty five.
That, you, you make a good point. I, I know from some work that we were doing at our museum, um, being colorblind was actually considered very negative.
I, I think that's tragic.
And so I, so I wonder about that, if it would raise a flag. I, I think that's unclear. Christina, do you, what is your sense of if, if we were to go that tact, would it be, you know, considered egregious by those that? Are looking for our communities to not be colorblind?
I, so I, it's difficult for me to say as I'm not, uh, part of the reviewing agency. Um, I do think that, um, within higher levels of government, regionally and at the state level. There is, um, a move towards celebrating, celebrating differences and truly acknowledging that. Those, those differences historically have resulted in people being treated, um, more poorly than others. Um, I, I think that there is a preference to. Address those historic disparities, disinvestments, that kind of thing. Um, so I, I think from a policy level moving towards. Including some of this language would be appropriate. I don't think that it necessarily needs to be every single place where we have an equity focused policy or, um, a, 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 a policy that, you know, su- supports an equal distribution of, of resources. Um, but I do think that it would raise an eyebrow if it was completely absent from the plan. Um, I, I think that it could be, it could be addressed, um, or incorporated selectively with, um. With other policies written, uh, a little more broadly, and I, I think that would. Probably be better received. That, that would be my, my personal take on it.
I, can I just propose maybe then we, we keep it to, to other groups that have not, including other groups that have not historically engaged in long range of planning process and see, you know, see how it balances back. Cause personally, it just feels like a rubber stamp and disingenuous and, um. But, but I think to have, you know, and, you know, I, I do have friends who are people of color and we've talked about this. And we don't see ourselves as victims. Uh, we, you know, and I think, uh. If we're not always thinking about our race, you know, and, and I don't think we, we all think about our race all the time, wherever we operate, but just identifying. That there are historically, uh, you know, people that have not been engaged and, and, uh. Uh, I think that would speak kind of more meaningfully to me. But, um, but identify like, I think just scrubbing all that, uh, would also would satisfy kind of this colorblind and kind of me.
Maybe there were demographics, like a variety of demographics to signal that it is, it can be age related and income type related. So if we, if we put demographics in there, then it's by, by many different measures intentionally connected with people from. Uh, a variety of demographics who have not historically engaged in long range planning processes. It's just. Like, hey, what do you think about that?
That works for me.
Yeah, me too. Cause it's a bucket for all the different, cause there's like three different demographics up there. Our categorical demographics, income, age and.
And that captures people who, you know, for the LGBTQT community that I also feel is absent from many of these discussions. So I think that. But you can't tell.
Meredith, I need, I need to learn about that.
Well, I, I still, I, I, I mean, this is just how I'm going to fall down all these. I mean, I think that colorblindness is the. Goal that I would have and especially when we're talking about inviting people into the planning process. So we're not talking about. Policies per se that are going to affect. If we're, we're talking about a welcome to the community about participating in this planning. And so I just think like, if I have a neighbor or anything like. I'm going to encourage my neighbor to come and participate in the planning and it doesn't matter what you look like or how much you make or anything. Uh, and so that's, and that's one of the reasons that I put employ multiple outreach methods and platforms to welcome and facilitate broad participation. Cause I think that maybe is something that we could work on is how can we reach more people, um, to participate.
The, the language is yours. The discussion is equity versus equality will have again in city council with what is said often. That then becomes our local comprehensive plan, which is a guide. To some extent, that's inconsistent with vision twenty fifty in the legislation of the King County planning policies. When the moment comes for certification, that conversation happens. This is what we'll hold up. As the local version that meets that, it won't be entirely the same. But it, it is your recommendation and, and your wording. As a professional planner, I would stick to the words used recently as much as humanly possible. But they are, it, it is your doctor.
I do feel that, that the move, that the world that we live in is not fair. And I do believe that we have to put language in there that acknowledges that. But it also, it really is a movement towards a kinder, gentler end of the world that we live in. And I think acknowledging that there has been that historic, um, this disadvantage. And we could sit there and talk about which group and what, but really just capturing, you know, that, that statement that it hasn't been fair for everybody, I think is important. Personally, so that's why I'd like to see that language better. But I, I, I think that it's more genuine if we have a broader, more inviting for all groups or whoever may identify themselves as, as disadvantaged. That when you start listing, that's never going to be progress.
But that's our local language at the state and regional level. It's intention.
Yeah.
That language was chosen.
Right.
Quite intentionally.
Uh.
For a variety of re- reasons, redlining and so forth. They plan to call it out. And so our, our task is to be consistent with it. How we're consistent is obvious.
You know, and, and I think perhaps maybe even recognizing stating that we, we recognize that there is red, there have been redlining. I think, you know, to, to maybe insert that I know there has been some, uh, there's some documents that have. Mentioned it, but.
Is that in the front? I can't remember. Is that in the front matter that we?
Yeah.
Intro statement.
But not it. I haven't seen it in the.
Yeah.
House the housing.
Oh, I was, I was trying to remember if it was in the intro of the comp plan, that front matter of the comp plan.
I forget when we first talked about it, but it was. I was using land use with whatever table or had that slide.
Are you in agreement that, that, that some iteration of what is in that box is, is, should be the kind of. The new statement for, uh, LU ten dash one. So I'm just, would love to move us along unless we don't. Okay, is that? Is, is everybody thinking that this alternative version in the margin or some version of it is, okay, yes, you know? Were you saying something or just saying?
That was incorrect.
Yeah, Christine, I think we're ready to move on to the next item.
Great. Um. Yeah, uh, definitely want to, want to move things along. Um, there was a question on what is the, the land use mechanism for getting at this objective? There are a variety, um, one of the really obvious ones would be something like, um, mixed use development that allow people to more readily access the businesses and services that they need, uh, day to day. That, that kind of, that kind of, um, intervention would be. Like a, a pretty easy one to, to consider, uh, having, addressing this policy. Um, I think that's all, that's all that I have for land use. Let me bring up. Here is. Environmental quality. Sorry for any motion sickness there. Um. Most of these were pretty straightforward to me. Uh. There were, there were a couple of references in here to others providing some suggested policy language. Uh, it sounds like that may have already trickled in. Um, so I will wait to hear from that and then follow up with Mark. If I still have any, um, like here, uh, this, um, section, uh, if I saw, am missing anything. Um. Uh, the rest of this, I think is just clarification. Um, which I, I am happy to provide separately, um, in a, in a cover memo. I did see there were quite a lot of suggested changes, uh, within the, the new climate policy sections. Um, I do agree that these are a little clunky. We were, we were referencing the language in, um. In the climate action plan and they were dealing with both, uh, like solid waste landfill stuff and also food systems, food waste stuff. Um, so it does look like there's some overlap and I think that I can take your suggestions, simplify this section and be done with this. Uh, and I'll, I'll have that ready for the next time, uh, if we want to. Get like a quick consensus on it.
Yeah, we, we discussed this at length at the last meeting and I think we all felt the consensus was this could all be consolidated into about two or three items.
Um, yeah.
Higher level and broader. And so if based on the comments you could see that, I think that reflects the consensus.
Okay, yeah, that sounds great. And I, I think that that, I can do that with the, with the guidance that has been provided. Um. This is. Here's the last one. Uh, there were some, some requests for clarity on terminology. Uh, that's something that I'm also happy to provide under separate covers so that we can move on to capital facilities, utilities and transportation, if that's okay. And then I saw that there were some suggestions to, um, revert to some of the previous, um, previous language. Uh, within, uh, this element, uh, and to, to create some new policies, which I'm also happy to do. Uh. Yeah, I don't, I don't think I have any questions on this one. Uh, okay, so let me head back to my presentation. Were there any other comments that folks had on climate policies within these elements that I should be aware of before we move on?
I think one of the other general things and I don't think we need to discuss it. I think hopefully Commissioner Yanni's feedback reflected that in the background sections for each of these, we just felt that there were some updates needed to reflect more current documents and stats. And we assume that's on the, on the agenda, but we didn't really spend much time reviewing those and thought that is something.
Yes, um, I did, I did see that those, um, that there were, um, notes to that effect and we'll make sure to get those updated.
Thanks, yes.
Okay. Moving on to capital facilities and utilities. Um, so. These are comparatively simple. Um. The twenty fifteen elements that you have for capital facilities and utilities are generally consistent. Uh, broadly speaking, we need to reflect updated inventories, capacity information and planned improvements. And we are actively coordinating with public works on that, but we haven't gotten all of the information from public works yet. Uh, there are also some public utility districts that we need to connect with, um, through public works to get some information from them. So that inventory is in the works. Um. Essentially, that information is used to understand what the current conditions are. And then looking at the land use, uh, element. We can forecast what the future needs are to be able to achieve the, the land use. Uh, goals and policies. Using that information, we then can develop a six year capital improvement plan that is used for budgeting and that kind of thing. Uh, so that's like the, the very short term implementation. Um. Plan for capital facilities in particular. Uh, broadly, um, you might consider maintaining a kind of a, a twenty year wish list. Some communities do that, which makes, uh, updating the six year CIP a little bit easier. Um. Not all communities do this. This is not currently part of your comprehensive plan, uh, but it is, it is something to consider doing. Uh. The, the two elements, capital facilities and utilities are also generally consistent with King County's countywide planning policies. Um, and also with PSRC vision twenty fifty, uh. The, the real differences, um, so for King County's countywide planning policies, uh, there is. Um, some policy directive to prioritize investments that address historic disinvestment or other kinds of disparities. Uh, that have resulted in different neighborhoods receiving less funding or less improvements over time. Um, that is not currently reflected in capital facilities and utilities. Uh, both of these. Uh, uh, regional plans also ask us to consider, uh, water reclamation, especially for some of the most water intensive uses like parks, cemeteries and schools where you're watering a lot of water. Um. Uh, and again, more, um. More consideration about how, how a community could start to address those, uh, historic disparities or, um, lack of investment over time. PSRC vision twenty fifty is very, very similar. Um, and then the, the only difference really, uh, thematically between PSRC's vision twenty fifty and King County countywide policies is this last point, um, which also, uh, expands, um, the replacement of failing onsite septic. Systems, uh, with sanitary sewer connections or any kind of alternative technology that's comparable or better to a sanitary sewer co- uh, connection.
On that.
That's not something that I have a lot of information about. Um, so if you're going to ask me what those technologies are, I don't know. And I can get back to you on that.
We will, we'll do that research and so forth, but we already agreed to change the name. No longer, it's OSS.
Onsite sewer. I, I did see that, um, I did see that in your notes. Um. PSRC vision twenty fifty is still calling it septic. Uh, I think King County is still calling it septic. Um, I'm happy to make that update to OSS across the board. Totally fine by me.
I feel like we should put septic though, because I think people don't know, like I, I wouldn't have, like, I think people reading it would.
Yeah, so maybe a parenthetical OSS parenthetical septic, just so EG septic.
Previously.
When I start transitioning that, the word use instead of Yanni's. Okay.
Sure.
Got it.
That works for me.
It's not a hill. I think any of us are going to die on.
No.
Yeah, I'm, uh, I'm definitely starting to see a lot more of the, the OSS terminology, but septic is just like really ingrained in the lexicon. Yeah, I'm I'm definitely starting to see a lot more of the the OSS terminology, but septic is just like really ingrained in the lexicon, so. Um, it'll probably be both for a while. Um, okay, so with that, I provided a discussion guide that had just a couple of three questions on it. I'm I'm hoping that, uh. The first question is pretty straightforward, and nobody has any problems with. Uh, encouraging the use of reclaimed water, especially in these areas that are water intensive uses. Um. But something that's not currently in your comp plan, so that will be some new policies that will add.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, actually. Could you list the pros and cons? Because I really don't know a whole lot about what that.
There is. There's some. Infrastructure investment, so people need to put in, uh, what's called the the purple pipe. Um, some people have an ick factor associated with that because that is, you know. Used water that is clean and reclaimed and is. Safe for this kind of use, but it's definitely not drinking water, so, um, there are some perception issues with that. There is also it it. Does have a a higher cost initially because you do have to provide an extra system to be able to reclaim that water. Uh, but there's not really. I don't think there's much of a problem in encouraging projects to consider the use of reclaimed water. Uh, or to have the city pilot. A project like that if it made sense when. A project became available that could make use of that kind of system.
Things like retention basins or buried cisterns or things like that 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 then would need to have code associated to say a ex-gallant cistern is allowable underground or a retention basin is. Allowed. Is that? Is that what you're getting at here that? Was that the down? That no, no pun intended, the downstream effects.
Yeah, yeah. So so there is some more infrastructure onsite. There's additional piping that has to occur within a building. Uh, there's additional signage that has to be posted, but you may have. You probably at some point have come across a sign that says not potable water, not for drinking, don't drink this water. So there's there's just like a little bit more. Um, a little bit more cost and a little bit more development activity associated with it. Um. Typically, those kinds of systems would be treated. Fairly similar to any other kind of underground utility system like a stormwater vault. Um, so I. I don't think that there are likely to be any code barriers, but that would be in, uh, one thing that we would want to double check. Uh, if we do encourage this to make sure that that is the case or to get an amendment on the list for Mark.
Well, yeah, at this policy level, we can go forward if it's the consensus on. The policy for water reclamation. And then whether it's building codes or stormwater manual or et cetera, the development regulations and requirements are later.
So we all go on. I'm I'm okay. All right. Christina, uh, water reclamation is a thumbs up.
Great. Um, okay, uh, the the next question is one of the equity focused questions, so we have some policy directives. Uh, that we prioritize capital facility and utility investments. Uh, or improvements in areas that have historically been underserved or otherwise are experiencing a disparity. Can we? Are we comfortable making this a prioritization criterion when we are preparing capital improvements plans and selecting projects to move forward? Uh, or is that something that we are? That we need to think differently about?
A lot of that's council level budget CIP. But you could introduce some policy.
I also wonder if it's also kind of above our pay grade and that it would like affects grants and and things like that, like it's. I would think the community by and large would say where's the current need? And the community wouldn't let be hamstrung by. Well, it's not, you know, it's like on priority. It's a deep priority in this area, but this area has been underserved. And it's an a priority for here. Like I I don't I don't understand the implication. Do you guys?
I'm not sure of the actual, like where where are we at? Like, what's the current status of the inequity in the in the capital? Like, I don't have an understanding of that. If there is an area in LFP that has historically been. Uh, underserved in terms of capital facilities.
Or currently has.
Currently has.
Yeah, lack of facilities.
Yeah.
Capital facilities includes, for example, parks, and we've recently begun a journey as a city to. Provide a waterfront park for people who have been underserved by it because they don't have deeded rights to access the city. So that was a capital investment the city made based on. A perspective, a potential need or a perceived need that underserved people or people that lived in parts of town that were underserved needed that investment.
I think it's a it's a locals or covenants associated with, uh, heated with the the land. I don't. I don't think it was the city that had. Uh, created that.
You're right.
Yeah.
But I think the city was responding to the needs of citizens in the city to have access to the water.
Or a similar example that we've already talked about in some of our earlier discussions is. Um, in the southern gateway, there's kind of a lack of available park space for that portion of the city. Uh, that also happens to be where you've got most of your multifamily development. Uh, where you happen to have more. People of color, more people with lower incomes. Um, so that would be a really great example of where like. If the city is gonna make an investment in purchasing property, they may choose to invest there because that area is. Underserved and historically has seen some lack of investment.
I think we see a lot of that in the northwest corner of the city as well, right? There's a lot of multifamily there and we lack parks.
Right there. I I'd be comfortable with that, you know, with parks. I I think just the comment that I made previously would be to in terms of infrastructure is. Uh, maybe having, uh, with electric vehicles, uh, charging stations so we can promote, because it kind of ties into climate change. I in multifamily, excuse me, multi-density residential. Um, they're not likely to to purchase EVs because of the inability to charge, so perhaps having language saying that we support that. I'm not necessarily that we have to qualify at this point in time, but that's.
Yeah, yeah, that's a great point, and I don't, um, I don't want to give the the impression that. Addressing disparities or a historic lack of investment would take precedence over like an urgent need to. Maintain a critical facility that's failing or something to that effect. Um, it's essentially like if two projects are. Otherwise equal. You would potentially prioritize. The project that would address a disparity, but if there's a critical need somewhere else that would outweigh. You know, this. This prioritization criterion, right? So it's not. It wouldn't. It wouldn't like automatically move the project to the top of the list. It would be like all else equal. We would. Choose to address this versus.
We would move forward with this. Yes, okay, so. All right, Christina, we're ready for the next one, climate.
Okay, um, I've. Included some proposed climate goals and policies that are directly tied to. Uh, the Climate Action Plan and looking for feedback on those if there's anything missing. Um, there wasn't as much specifically related to capital facilities and utilities within. Um, the Climate Action Plan. So those aren't some. Those aren't very hefty sections, um, but looking for initial thoughts on those.
Good job. What I'm doing, it was always the very first. Published packet, then corrected, then sent by a separate email. They included it inside. So it's goal number five.
Yeah, it's blue.
On page. Fifty-five, I think, in the packet on the website. There's five of them. Expanding the public freedom, expanding or upgrading utilities, consider environmental justice criteria and making decisions. Plan for resilient and redundant utility services to improve resilience in the event of a natural disaster or other emergency. Promote underground utilities to the extent feasible. Encourage the expansion of fiber internet lines throughout the city. And encourage a transition from natural gas energy usage to electric energy for homes and businesses. These were all under the heading of enhance community resilience and support environmental justice outcomes to the provision of reliable utility services.
Any discussion on this? David?
If I'm okay.
See him? Okay, Christina, thumbs up on that one.
Great. I am very happy to hear that. Um, and then. You should have, um, there was a. There was a problem with the PDF export on the, um, capital facilities elements. You should have that separately. Uh, not in the original packet.
Oh. I'm lost with what you're where where you're directing us.
Um, I think Mark sent out a supplemental document on the eighth of May. Uh, or thereabouts, uh, that has the, um, the full capital facilities element.
Can you share it on your screen?
Yeah, I think.
I sure can.
If we're on page fifty-five, fifty-six, does that mean we're?
If you're on page fifty-five, fifty-six, you won't have this because, uh, the full the full PDF, um, didn't make it into the, didn't make it into the packet. Um, so for capital facilities, the the climate goal. Is to maintain and invest in capital facilities that support community resilience, reduce greenhouse gas emissions and improve environmental justice outcomes. With supporting policies, uh, one through four. Uh, so policy one is support the co-location of capital facilities to maximize the use of land and minimize the impact of facilities on the community. Policy two in this section is when citing new capital facilities, consider environmental justice criteria and making decisions that's very similar to the the utilities policy. Number three is when building new capital facilities or completing major renovations, consider the feasibility of establishing a resilience hub, um, and this. The term resilience hu- hub comes directly from the Climate Action Plan. This is a community-serving facility that's enhanced to support residents and coordinate resource distribution and services before, during or after a natural hazard event. Um, so it's. Like a a community hub to to get resources. Uh, in, you know, in a disaster situation. Uh, and then policy four is plan for redundancy and continuity of operations in the event of a natural disaster or other emergency.
Both. Yeah, okay, we're we're good, Christina.
Fantastic. Okay. Just we're moving right along, you guys.
I don't think everybody speaks the same language. Is it possible to just have an asterisk? And then like the footnote on the bottom as to, so I know when you see the comments, but is is that? Or even for.
A parent that is believing.
Yeah.
Something that. To define, yeah.
Yeah, um. There are a lot of technical terms that are, uh, starting to appear in. Goals and policies, and I am wondering if maybe even a glossary might be appropriate at some point.
Right, I think so, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, the. I'll see if I can squeeze that in, but it's it. That's kind of the direction that I've been leaning lately. Okay, um, that's that's great. Um. The transportation element, this is, um, so this is reflective of the feedback that you've already given. Uh, related to all of the transportation goal and policy suggestions that Fair and Pierce already made. Um, the twenty fifteen transportation element was generally consistent. Uh, Fair and Pierce has incorporated the guidance that you've suggested, and, um. So what I'm looking for feedback on is whether you have any concerns on. Proposed policy revisions, new policies, some of the word choice that Fair and Pierce have has proposed. Uh, or how they've incorporated climate policies since theirs are spread out versus having a dedicated climate commitment goal with subpolicies. And for reference, we should be starting on page fifty-nine of the packet.
Can you bring that up? I I see on my version, Muni Code's doing another. Magical thing where they put five or six. Sentences overlapping each other.
Oh, great.
But the Creoles don't have it.
Yeah, just a just a second, um, to navigate to a different folder.
Presenting.
Weird.
Yeah.
I kept forgetting. Once you put the word or PDF into Muni Code, it catches some sort of. Hidden background, uh, punctuation or whatever, yeah. Or insert, and then it just. It's bizarre. Someday I'll figure out. There you go. Thank you.
Sure. Is it large enough for everyone to read?
I I'm good.
Everybody. Okay.
Did anybody have feedback on the edits that are part of this? Policy. Perception.
Fair enough, did you? I I everything was fine, the. Yeah, the only the only thing we talked about this last meeting was on, uh, policy T seven one. I was. I was just. Noting that. We. If the priority is to get new multifamily construction going. That putting additional requirements might inhibit that, but it's just something to think about.
Right, like you're you're saying it might be a barrier.
Yeah, I'm saying that we need to always think about that because. Sign. What the priorities are.
You know, it strikes me that these bullet points, I'm just remembering your prior feedback, Christina. Aren't these like, some of these are implementation actions, not policies?
Yeah, they, uh, they definitely are, um. I would say strategy, like if, oh, gosh, sorry, just. If I were doing it, uh, scroll back to the bottom. Sorry for. The speedrun here. I would say strategies. To consider or might include. Um, something like that that is a little bit more broad, or I would just migrate those. I. These are. Nearly verbatim from the Climate Action Plan, if I'm recalling right. Um, so they don't. They don't even necessarily need to be in here, uh, especially since we're already referring to the Climate Action Plan.
My my inclination would be to lose people and point together. I just feel it's too. Tactical and unbalanced relative to all the other implementations, actions we have on all the other policy domains. Like, and I don't know. Why these deserve elevation over. You know, where we're gonna recommend putting a park or where we're gonna recommend planting trees or where we're gonna recommend building sidewalks.
I think too, it's part of it is redundant, and I mean, the one part that is nice is this idea of mitigation, but we picked mitigation up in, uh. T one dot nine. So I I feel like I I feel comfortable with your recommendation because we do. We do talk about that, and I it's like one point nine is some. we do talk about that and I had flagged one point nine as something that maybe we even be found and it's, it's one of my big moments with some transits worth for our community to use, that they're not really providing any mitigation, mitigation of what opening the hundred and eighty-fifth station in this restaurant that transit will do for pedestrian access, so. You know, you're bringing a green or a sustainable transportation option in, and yet you're creating a barrier for using it by creating less safe pedestrian and bike routes to these areas, so I, I would be a big fan of us creating a lot more teeth in the language we have around mitigation requirements.
I think, can you support that?
I think too often there are folks that are financially benefiting off our community without participating in improving infrastructure, so. Yeah, I, I agree, I think we can lose it and, and then maybe revisit one point nine to.
I guess I have another question on seven point one, do we shouldn't say that the strategy identified in the Climate Action Plan, Climate Element, which isn't even final yet, should be supported, or should we use Christina's language based on consideration of the strategies identified in this plan?
I, I think it needs to be consistent, and I think at some point that plan has to go through, will have to go to council and review. So I think that's where kind of the consistency will happen, so it makes sense.
Council approves the climate action. In May, but it is an implementation tool, not the plant policy. Then along comes this year-long climate element that you get a second shot at the policy level and then developing regulations.
Could T seven be just a description of the, like the next level up from this language, because this language does feel very much like, you know, it was lifted straight from their, their plan and sort of what's the heart of this, like, how would you describe it as a policy for our cities? Seven point one and seven point two, what's?
It just seems to me that if we address the mitigation piece, that, as you've suggested in that.
But it's very specific though, I know, I see what you're saying about that, but could we just have language that says that we have some sort of accordance with the, I don't know how you guys feel about that, recognizing that we do have a climate action plan that we all, you know, kind of defer to and have adopted. This almost gets to city practices though, so is there something we could say that the cities sort of operational practices, right, the types of vehicles we have, how we clean and how frequently we clean our streets? Should it be something more having to do with a policy that our city's operational processes are aligned with best practices in, you know, or, you know, that the city's, city's own operations minimize negative environmental impacts of the transportation system or stuff? Yeah, because it's also in the capital facilities, this electric, yeah, so it's, it's kind of redundant too, but but it puts our city on, if you look at a policy level for engaging in the practices that are supportive of. I, I feel like we could lose T seven, and if we're going to keep it, maybe we figure out, like, what's the more general statement that these types of actions fit other? You know, diversion of climate action plan, where they do get into quite a bit of, in length, they have all those strategies. The electrification of the city's facilities, they, they have this and that, I feel like if we just deferred as saying that we adopt it, knowing that it will have to go through the council and that we've got the, the other thing coming up, marrying the policy with the climate action. But yeah, I think keeping it general would be better.
So we could, we could simplify it a little bit, like what I'm showing on the screen now, that kind of does make it a little bit higher level. It's maybe a little bit more consistent with how we've addressed climate action plan policies in the other elements.
Who throws up on this? Yeah, this is great. Okay Christina.
Okay.
We can move forward.
Awesome, and by that, I'm assuming you mean back to the top of this document. Are there, are there any changes that you'd like to start talking about within Goal One or its associated policies?
I got caught up on, I know we didn't discuss this last time, but I'm just wondering how everybody thinks on T one twelve. To me, it just struck me as odd because I know the data that was prepared earlier suggested that we really have no jobs in Lake Forest Park and a minimal number of people, if anybody actually commuting into the city. So I'm wondering what purpose of policy goal of encouraging employers of the city to support commuter production program strategies, whatever, like, it's really going to drive in Lake Forest Park. It just seems unnecessary.
While I agree with you that this is likely to not have any significant impacts, it's also not harmful, and in the event that a larger employer did locate in Lake Forest Park at any point in the twenty-year planning horizon, this, it could have more of an impact at that point in time. There's certainly no harm in having it, even if it isn't going to make a huge amount of impact. And it is, it is reflected in especially PSRC's Vision Twenty Fifty. So I, I think that it would support PSRC certification if folks are willing to keep it.
Yeah, I don't have any fundamental concern with it, it just seemed odd, but that makes sense if it's in line with PSRC's review.
Yeah, they, they want to funnel everyone as much as possible onto high-capacity transit and then onto local transit in, in addition to that. Or otherwise reduce travel demand at peak hours.
We're well-served by mass transit, that would be more, more, they don't seem to prioritize it investments in our.
When we think about one point four, it seems to sort of suggest that we really want to be putting resources towards improving access to light rail via motorized transportation versus doubling down on improving pedestrian and bike access to which transportation, that's just again thinking about the size of our city and the fact that we're already a ten through city. Is our priority greater beyond the community, is here for cars to be in our community, or easier for pedestrians and cyclists to be? I read it as, you know, having us provide greater connectivity to the new light rail system.
I viewed it as the latter.
The, mark for cars less would be like less for.
Yeah, less auto.
Less auto or?
Less, less auto worrying.
Oh.
Less asphalt or bike lockers or.
For one, identify and implement measures to accommodate the anticipated increase in the number of people accessing light rail via motorized. No matter what active transportation.
Yeah, that's in Twenty Fifty language, but the, the, the part that I'm focusing on, maybe including is not the right word. But improving multi-modal connections.
Yeah, I, I do think that there are, even, even referenced in the second part of this policy, there are motorized options that still result in fewer cars on the road, like transit accessibility. So I I think that this is supposed to be broadly supportive of moving as many people as possible out of single occupancy vehicles, while also recognizing that people are still going to be arriving in single occupancy vehicles to a certain extent. Especially if the parking garage ever comes to fruition.
Quit eliminating motorized. Well, I mean, if motorized also includes like bikes and scooters and so forth, I could see that, I was just, I, I, I read it initially as making it easier for cars to go through our community, which seems darn hard to what we're trying to. Yeah, if you guys are fine with it, I'm fine with it, motorized is, is generally, you know, not just vehicles.
I, I think the intent regionally, there's no more single occupancy cars, so I don't see that intent ready.
Yeah, I think the, the specific interventions that are highlighted in the second, yeah.
When I'm sitting with PSRC, I'll roll this up as an approval.
Well, thank you for the discussion. Okay. I think that as you look through this, this transportation document, do you guys have anything else to add for the needs discussion? Mindful of our fifteen minutes working. Everybody thumbs up to move on that thing in this document? Just thought a glossary, I think, was really nice, would be nice in this section to support glossary.
Yeah, I, I think that makes sense. If folks are willing to accept some homework, as I am, I am a professional who suffers from the use of jargon. If anybody wants to identify some of the terms that are confusing or that they think might be confusing to other people that haven't been involved in a planning process like this before, I would greatly appreciate that, as I think it would expand the glossary that I would otherwise prepare.
So just, we don't have to make up the definitions, but just send you the terms.
Yeah, send me a list of words that don't make sense. Yep, I'm asking, just pick out the words or phrases that you'd like to see in that glossary, or that you think other people in the community would like to see.
Challenge accepted.
Christina, thank you for all the work you've done, as I mean, evidenced by our lack of discussion. So we all have reviewed it, it looks like you've really captured what our, our hopes and dreams are. You want to move on to that, the volume two?
Yeah, we can take a look at volume two, uh, volume two is a more technical document.
Maybe it's kind of like that material you talked about, same with the other, these issue of service going to be updated, that's.
Yeah, I think for the other ones, I mean, unless you've done updates on this, and I may have missed them because I haven't focused on volume two, then maybe we don't need to spend a lot of time.
There have been some updates, I think, similar, similar to the other elements. We probably, Fair and Pierce probably needs to go through it at least one more time, just to, to make sure that we've caught everything. There are some coordination items that are flagged in here for further discussion, and there's the need to update some figures still.
Is there anything that you want to draw our attention to here?
I don't think so, I think that the next, the next step for Fair and Pierce is likely to check in with Public Works on some, some of their questions.
Christina, did you also get our comment from last time regarding the, the natural development section of the crime prevention? It was pretty specific, so I don't know if that, that was one of the comments I think about at the last meeting. Let's see, the territoriality, it's that last section of the volume two. Volume two. Yeah, in addition to some of those stats being updated.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I don't know if you caught that, Yon's comment.
Yeah, I, I see his comment that said Septed needs discussion and why. And.
Yeah. They're almost zoning code language there, so that's what kind of struck us at the last meeting.
Okay, yeah, we we didn't do much with this Septed section. So that was what the, what is currently in the comp plan. But I think that, I mean, looking at the, looking at the edits that are proposed, I don't think there are any, I don't think there are any problems with them, I didn't recall any questions. But I'll make sure that those do get updated.
Christina, with so, particularly with this transportation piece, we're wrapping up. I, something that stood on my mind, I mean, also to fellow commissioners, is that we pin a lot on town center, you know, that town center for parking lot and different mix of retail. And, and at the end of the day, it's a piece of private property that, you know, we have very little control over, do we want to signal that we want to participate in, you know, another pass at sort of our policies around this sub area or acquiring the land or something, because it feels a little bit empty to continue to say, here are all of our hopes and dreams for town center, and that it's very pedestrian oriented, and that it also has all of these services that it offers the community. What we're talking about someone's private property, and I just wonder if we should be signaling a policy or two in our comp plan to show a pathway for how we can actually achieve that vision.
Yes, that's a perfect segue, Christina has a suggestion. The placement that we did talk about might be in economic development. The message that I've heard in the last three months is the town center's been examined, they've chosen a less dense scenario for now, and they do not want to revisit it. But this is a long-term plan. So the opportunity is somewhere in land use or economic development to part two or three, maybe just one policy that Christine has, a relook at five years or some sort of a, a company timeline kind of thing that captures on it or purchase.
Yeah, so what, what Mark is, what Mark is talking about is that there is a, an implementation progress report due five years after adoption to see how things are working, that has to be filed with the state. And pending the conclusions of that report, it may be appropriate to revisit the town center area and some of the, some of the preferences and assumptions that have informed that work previously to revise or update it so that it more closely aligns with how the city wants to develop in the future. So we were, we were essentially planning on keeping, you know, status quo related to town center for now. Get a better understanding of how some of the new housing policies and development regulations will change development in the city, and then take another look at town center at that five-year mark, which would also align with some, some upcoming work on the periodic update, it's a ten-year cycle now. But at that five-year mark, the city will be starting to think about where it might need to make some changes in the future to, to be able to improve implementation.
So what would that language look like? So examples?
I, I don't have the specific, I don't have the specific implementation language written yet. I'll bring it with economic development next time.
I, I had wanted to suggest though, that actually there was maybe a policy statement that we wouldn't necessarily have to wait for five years, but that policy statement might say that we would value or have an interest in acquisition or partnership somehow. Somewhere in the language of the materials I was reading for tonight on housing, you talked about maybe, you know, using more sub-area plans to experiment with stuff, but I I think what we need is we need to purchase it to really do what we want with it, Merlin Guys already told us straight out that they plan to reduce the amount of commercial space in a redevelopment scenario. So we, I mean, even. So we, I mean, even if we allow them with more housing, we're, we're still not going to get the things that we keep saying we want out of it also, even throughout this document. And so it just strikes me that we could elevate that by, by suggesting that our city for a variety of reasons that are relative to climate resilience, economic development, you know, zoning vibrancy, because as we see more density in our residential areas. And, and we don't have, we still don't have that commercial infrastructure or that commercial density. We're, we're just never going to get there. And so it, it strikes me that some of the things that keep referring back to town center in our comp plan, that the job it had here are, are not, never going to bear fruit because it's just, we can't tell a private property owner what they can do. And the current property owner has told us what they would do, and it's still not, doesn't match our, our goals. So like, we're, we're in this funny situation where, I don't know, we just think something's going to magically change one day. And we're right now, we're playing chicken with them and we're the ones that are losing time.
And for the 20 years that I've lived in this community, it's been the same conversation.
It's going to stand off.
Yeah.
That's why I feel so strongly that we have to expand our commercial mixed use on the zoning because we are, like I said, we're getting so top heavy with, with residential that it's not a viable tax base. So I think really the city has to think, but I mean, all of, with acquisitions. Capital, all of this is, I mean, we have this funding shortfall and really to expand our commercial base. Suddenly we open up another tax, you know, a tax base, a local tax base that the city can capture. So. You know, if it's not town center, it could, you know, any other corridor, as long as we start maybe pushing that needle towards a more hea- a healthier cross section of, of a, of a healthy city, which can't be all single fan or all single or housing. That's New York.
You didn't.
Correct. It, it can't just be that. It's just not a viable. And that's why there is that mismatch. But I, but I would absolutely invite some language that allows our civic center or our gathering spaces to reflect the, 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 you know, the, the type of people we are, which there's that big mismatch.
What are Christina, this section that's coming up in economic development, like I, I'm not fundamentally against, you know, seeing more commercial area. I don't, I don't know if it's the purview of us as a citizen commission to start talking or reopening up ideas about rezoning, because if I were a company owner and some of those areas might be really upset. Because it directly affects, you know, where I'm living, or not me, but if I were one of those. So I have mixed feelings about that right now. But I do think in that economic development section, there's this thing, I mean, I think there's something we should capture there that puts us in the driver's seat for, I mean, we're a little town, whether, whether you like it or not, just having more commercial space that a private person owns isn't going to necessarily change the calculus for us. It's just going to invite more people to, you know, make money in other ways in our community, but it just, I wonder what that mechanism would look like.
I, I, I'm all for that, but, but I think we go back to the, the funding shortfall and if you look at return local 104 is that little pocket of commercial and it is such a vibrant hub. And if, if we are talking about increasing density in the R 72, 7.2 zones. There's no other, and we're talking about walkability. I think just to, to allow, you know, these zoning, even mixed use, then suddenly you do, you can start inspiring new developments to come in. And if it is commercial use and, and then the city does have a tax, a more viable tax base to, to, to draw from.
Can you, what I'm going to suggest is if we're going to have a conversation about like policy goals here. Christina, if you do bring forward language or if we have a conversation about that, could you also give us a mini encapsulation of the public survey feedback on that? Cause it felt like there was a lot of loud voices coming through in the data on where people wanted to see commercial development, what people felt about commercial development and what people felt about density. And that might inform how we define the policy goals that we want to catch.
Yeah, I, I'd be happy to do that. And just to, to give you a sneak preview. What you're, what you're going to see is a little bit of conflict in public opinion. People definitely value single family residential neighborhoods in Lake Forest Park. And at the same time, they see this need for more, more businesses and services that help them live the, the quality of life that they want to live in a, in a way that's very accessible to them. And so I, I think that there's, there's likely going to be a more difficult transition period if we do want to move towards mixed use. But I, I do think that there is, there is an appetite for that kind of development. And I think understanding how it could fit in with the character of the existing neighborhood will, would be valuable. And that would be something that we would need to, you know, work out in, in implementation. And we can't really do that at the comprehensive plan policy level. But I'll, I'll highlight that for you guys next time.
Well, part of the material for that next section also help us see the, the friction point with commercial space right now. I know that when we were working on the town center code. We heard a lot that, and we all see it when we're driving around our communities. We're not seeing a lot of big commercial developments going up at the scale that would fit in our community. And so maybe helping us see some of the realities of commercial space, you know, lease rates, vacancy rates, whatever, you know, that, that help us to we make a few more informed decisions about how we should be looking at the ways in which we might support more economic vibrancy in our community that are matched up with the market forces that are there right now.
Yeah, let's.
That'll meet the goal of resilience, right?
Right.
There was also economic reasons that we're talking about.
We, we were out recently and saw, you know, a lot, loads of street level vacancy, which is what Merlin guy told us. They said, fine, if he requires to build ground level retail, we'll put printing up on the windows and, you know, that says, hey, come live here, you know, but we can't, we're not going to lower our rent rates. And so those bottom spaces are sitting vacant in most areas. So don't make a spell that because we're going to propose it to. You know, like we can't make them, we, we can't make them lease the space near town center. You would think market forces would drive lease rates down. It's going to be more biting for small business owner, but it doesn't make they get a tax write-off and it's vacant. And I, I think there's like a standoff going between people who have commercial space. And so anyway, I just think it would be helpful to us if we knew a little bit more about those market forces as we start to envision policies. So that we're not assuming kind of if we build it, they'll come.
I, I just want to move the dial a little bit because we are just, just looking at the cross section of the city. It is not viable to have such a heavily residential city and, and look at that, I mean, in the level of service of our civic. A hundred percent. You know, we have to start moving that dial and now we're talking about increasing density for housing and, and it's, it just, I, I just without providing an opening. And I think that, I'm not saying we have to change, we have to know what that policy looks like, but I think we have to start thinking about turning that dial. So all of a sudden we can start thinking about increasing funding for the city, but we have to, and I agree, if it looks like reevaluating the town center, but I would even take a step back further and dare I say, you know, expanding commercial base in general. So if it's, it's not just pinched on our own guy or it can, and maybe we create a wonderful, we have, it's SR 522 isn't the only high transit quarter that we have. We have another one too. There are commercial properties, but they're just isolated pockets of the zoning map. But if we could expand that, and I live in that zone and I would love to be able, I love walking to local one or four. It makes it super walkable to have a, a, a mixed use. It makes it very vibrant and it, but unfortunately it's just one, one piece of property. It's not an entire zone. So anyways, just, just for thought, I want to encourage, you know, the commission to start thinking. Yes, thinking about five years, but also, you know, thinking about some sort of just a, a commercial base, just for the city to increase the cost, just for the, I think the council's been thinking about that for a long time. Yeah.
Quite a while, but you have an opportunity for policy.
Correct.
That influences the next round. What this isn't is a relook at the town center master plan. That just happened. So, but this isn't that.
Yeah.
Right? So if you want to investigate policies that kind of lead to the next time.
Well, that's why I was asking. It's not, I don't think this is a new idea about expanding commercial zones like it's a simple math problem that our city has, but I do think that at, at least for me, I don't know about for you guys, but it would be helpful to get from Christina as we start that conversation next month. Like what are some market forces and realities that we should be aware of so that when we're thinking about crafting policy, we're actually crafting policies that have a chance, you know?
Have some reality to it.
Right. And that's all I would like to know. Cause I don't think, I, I, I don't think I have enough background information on what's actually going on in the market right now to know how to craft a policy that will get us to where we're.
There is no mention of this in the comp plan. There is, you know, we all, the comp plan is turning more into a wish list. And I, as you had pointed out, it's, it's this constant wish list, but really I think, you know, to, to start thinking about how we can realize these wishes, we have to really look at the economic situation.
I think they all agree.
I, I, I get that, but what I'm saying is that, that having that policy in writing suddenly legitimizes it, starts, starts kind of turning that, that fairy boat towards that direction. We don't have to know what the answers are right now, what, what that zone is, but at least we allow the council, we signal to the council that it is important.
So I would encourage, I think, I apologize. I wasn't watching a clock. Are there other comments or requests that any of you have from Christina as we prep for our next meeting? Otherwise I'll move us along the narrative.
So we do transportation, right?
Sounds like it.
All right. Okay. I'm so happy that we got through all of these things and I'll get the format rolling so that it starts to look like a real document.
Okay. Any other questions of Christina? Christina, thank you so much for your time tonight. And you've been just so great to work with through this process. If we haven't told you lately, we appreciate you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I'm happy to work with you all. You guys are delightful. Have a great night and I'll see you next month.
That sounds great. Thank you. Do we have any new business?
We do not.
Any reports or announcements?
Um, next meeting is June 6th. So we're going to try and prepare the packet a little bit earlier this month.
Terrific. And then we still have Randy in the attendee list and, and if so, Randy, do you, do you have anything you'd like to say here at the end? Mr. Larson, we have a question to say.
Would. Just a suggestion, OTAC's a big company. Been through the year, done for a long time. And whether it's them or through other sources, it seems like one of the things that would be helpful too is to know some precedence of municipalities, our size, either in this region or somewhere else in the country that have explored the idea of taking ownership of their commercial district, whether it's literal ownership or in public, private partnerships. Something to shake, shake up the configuration of how Lake Forest Park goes forward meets its financial obligations and so forth. If that's not going to be through residential property taxes, then what, what is it? But precedent seemed like something that could, you could ask OTAC.
Yeah.
To, they work with a lot of municipalities throughout the country.
Thank you. Okay. Jennifer, next meeting is Christina laid it out for us at the beginning. So if you have anything else you'd like to add, please send it on to Mark in action. And with that, I would love to take a motion.
So move.
What are we moving?
To adjourn.
To adjourn. Thank you so much, Allison, Peter, I. Thank you for your time tonight, everybody.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time. Get home to your wife and stay married.
Scary as part of, I've been biking for two weeks.